I'm gonna go ahead and open the meeting here. This is our City of Granberry City Council Regular Meeting. It is 6:00 PM, Tuesday, January 17, 2023. We are at Granberry City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street in Granberry, Texas. I'm gonna call the order and have Reverend, our past senior pastor, Alan Lotta, please give us the invocation. Please stand.
Lord, we thank you for our nation, for the freedom of assembly, of religion, and of speech. We ask, Lord, for your blessing upon this meeting. Give us hearts to hear one another, minds to understand one another, and wills to do that which honors you. And in closing, Lord, we pray, let your kingdom come, let your will be done on earth and in Granberry as it is in heaven. In Jesus' name we pray for your blessing. Amen.
Amen. If you'd join us on the pledge to the United States flag and the Texas flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all. Honor to the Texas flag, our flag of allegiance to the people, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, we're gonna move right to item number four. We have the proclamations and presentations. First, we'll start with the proclamations of encouraging statements to recognize city staff. Mr. Kaufman.
You bet. Tammy didn't come prepared tonight for that, but she came back and it was in the newspaper from the TFNE Annual Conference and brought home 10 awards. Well, I sent y'all a text message on that, but I wanted to publicly recognize our tourism department for the success that they've had. Thank you, Tammy. Great job. Looking forward to what all that brings about. So, pretty incredible. We just send her off and she just comes back with all these awards. It's just magic. So, she is on that board and working with that group of folks and promoting the state of Texas altogether. So, it's really good to see us get those awards. Six first place and four second place. So, we're really excited about that. And we've got a great team and there's other things going on in our city, but we'll brag on that later. But I do want to touch on the radio program system that we've been working on with the police department, getting close to being able to implement that. I know the police have been working really hard with that and the IT department. So, thank y'all for that match and team, and so we'll look forward to seeing that come to fruition soon. But I'll just stop there for now.
Counsel?
Mr. Wadley. Mr. Mayor, this is also to Tammy and her team for the goosebump jump this weekend, the start to Winterfest. I thought it was a great success, a lot of people out there. And for anyone out here that wasn't there last, that didn't come this year, you don't have to take a full plunge. You can just get a little wet, dip your feet in, you're up to your ankles, knees, whatever, you know, and going down the slide, you don't get soaked. And so, well, some people did, but that was, they didn't land well. But, you know, it was fun. They raised money. Everybody out there was having a good time. I would encourage folks to come next year, but Tammy, good job to you and your team.
Other counsel? Councilwoman, I think you had a comment at the end of the session last two weeks ago, and I'd already cut it off. You commented on our boards and commissions?
Oh. I did mention it after the fact, but I actually do, since we're dealing with this tonight, anybody who has applied for a board and serves on a board or a commission or committee, I greatly appreciate your service. You guys do a lot of work ahead of time and vet a lot of things that we, that we need informationally, and so it takes a lot of work sometimes, so we greatly appreciate your efforts.
Thank you. Other? Okay. Let's move along to 4.2. We have the Granberry Volunteer Fire Department giving the 2022 report by Chief Matt Ohan. Mr. Ohan.
Counsel, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, thank you for your time. Everyone in the audience, thank you. What I'll be presenting tonight is just a State of the Union, State of the Department address. It's gonna be a review of last year and the projects that we're gonna be going forward into the following year. If anyone has any questions or anything that you have, any statements or concerns about, please ask. So, let me, here we go. So, our first year, just reviewing by the numbers, our total call volumes are busiest year yet with 1,613 calls. 60% was inside the city, 40% was outside of the city, and 25% of our total call volume was medical. Our average en route time, and that is from the time our pager goes off to the time that we have a truck en route, across those 1,600 calls is 2 minutes and 21 seconds. That's a, that's a really incredible number. I have a hard time truly impressing on what that number really means to the city and to our citizens. The national standard for paid fire departments is 90 seconds, and you're at 2 minutes and 21 seconds with a volunteer department. It's a truly incredible number, and it takes a lot from the organization and from the city to be able to get that number to happen, and we'll talk more about that. Our average apparatus en route time from once we're en route to on scene is five minutes. So, ideally, an average throughout the year, what you have is from the time that we've gone en route or from the time our pagers are toned out to the time that we're on scene, we're there in less than nine minutes. It's closer to eight. Average time on scene throughout the year was just 22 minutes and 35 seconds. And then just a real simple breakdown of what our call type in the city was for the year. And on our little bar graph, you'll see some very large bars and some small ones. Our call type for the year was across grass fires, medicals, car accidents, and fire alarms. That's gonna be the giant bulk of our actual call volume going across all of our calls.
Hey, Matt?
Yes?
Could I ask you, on that structure fire, you got 118. Do you know how many were in the city compared to the county?
I do. It's in my other, much more bigger breakout, and I can review that and come back to it in just a second.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's, I can tell, I do know the number off the top of my head for working structure fires in the city, and it was 30.
Okay.
It was 30. Now, what we get toned out to is a structure fire may not be a structure fire when we get there, but when we're on scene, a working structure fire in town was 30 this year.
Okay.
And that is commercial and residential.
Thank you.
Some extra numbers to focus on this year. We ended the year with a total membership of 60. Of those 60 members, each and every one of them combined responded to 10,564 calls. So, that's what the call volume looks like distributed across the membership. Total hours on scene by the membership was 9,655 hours. And very specifically, average number of firefighter response by call type, and this number reflects the average number of people on that scene. And I've highlighted commercial structure fires with 12 individuals, and that's an average, residential structure fires of nine, vehicle accidents of seven, and I want to highlight alarms with no fire, six, because every time that alarm goes off, you have to treat it as the real deal. You have to. And it's very rare that it is, but that's the call that's one that always worries me in our organization, because that's the call that you can really burn people out, because they're gonna show up, nothing's going on. They're gonna show up, nothing's going on. And to be able to have a good, healthy number of six people responding to that call continuously throughout the year, that's a very good number. Now, looking at our 2021, 22 funding sources, the numbers are a touch small up there, but the bulk of our budget, $650,000, was from the city. There's $80,000 that represents donations, monetary donations, they're, sorry, county subsidy, that's from Hood County, provided to us. There's, the monetary donations was 23,700. Total in grants collected for the year was 38,000, and equipment and PPE donations was another 80,000. And you can look at our little simple pie chart here, and 75% of the burden for funding the department is on the citizens and the city, and we've managed this year to get 25%. And that's, that's a good haul for us for this year. A lot of this has been with our networking, particularly on the equipment. We've had very good friends in other career departments that have donated PPE, which has been very, very difficult for everyone in the United States to get this year, and it's not that the city didn't contribute to that. They did, very heavily. And we've also had a donation of rescue equipment this year that was very high. And rescue equipment, the, think of them as the jaws of life, that equipment can be very expensive also. The PPE donation came from Trophy Club and the Graham, not, yeah, Grand Prairie, and the rescue equipment also came from Grand Prairie. So, those two departments donated to us PPE and extrication equipment. Is there any questions, particularly on this slide? And again, just breaking down a little bit more on the donations. The cash donations from our citizens collected throughout the year was the 23,700, and a major contributing factor to that is when we had the wildfires this summer, the Big L Fire, particularly out west of town. We're very fortunate in the community in the area that we live in. That event was very public. It was very well-known, particularly to everyone in the area, and when there's a call for help, the community does provide. And there was a colossal amount of resources and money and just straight donations that came into our organization. Mr. Kaufman and Mayor Jarrett, both were up at the station for that particular day when it was coming out, and they saw what it looked like with just the colossal amount of stuff and people that were coming in and out of Station 1. And obviously, the fire was on the far west side of the county. And again, just highlighting the tools and PPE donations from Trophy Club and Grand Grants and reimbursements. This is something that we have been working hard on. Our office manager, Heather Walls, has been very helpful with this. Obviously, the Big L Fire, again, we've talked about that that was a very public event, but total reimbursements off the grant, the Big L Fire, was $14,900. Heather was able to help lower our VFIS premium, which is our insurance, to $12,200. And then pump operations class is a class that we had reimbursed back to us from the state. Texas Farm Bureau was just a donation that we had requested through their organization. And then getting various training reimbursements through TEACs and using House Bill 2604 has gotten us $6,581, and the total reimbursement since 2020 is $78,000. We have several more grants that we're looking at for this year. The grants are always gonna be competitive. For volunteer, we can be able to get, there's extra grants that are set out there for us, and we're already looking at trying to put together packets to get more of a grant grab out there and get more exposure on the grant side. There's a lot of work that I think that our organization, we can do on that side, too. So, training for 2022, it's a number I'm really proud of, our training captain, Jesse Slaughter, and all the help that he provided this year to the organization. And no matter how awesome Jesse is, ultimately, the membership's the one that is gonna represent if the training is appreciated. And this year, across our membership, we had 2,750 hours of training across the department as a whole. It's an average of 67 hours per member, and on top of that, we had two rookie academies this year, and that's the new members that come into our organization and we provide their training. We also have that training extended to the neighboring county departments, and through those two programs or two academies this year, we've managed to push about almost 70 people through fire training this year. The training is not just something that's shot from the hip and you show up to. It's a state program. It's organized. It is recognized, and if you follow through, all the way through the very last steps of it, our training can take you to certifications and ultimately into people's careers. Obviously, not everyone in our department takes it for their firefighting career, and for that, it's just our continuing education. And just kind of a review for the call volume for the year. We had a lot of unusual weather events for 2022. 22 started off very cold, then we got hot, then we burned, and then there at the very end of the year, we got cold again, and we had a rash of a bunch of frozen sprinkler pipes again. Our standard call volume was as projected and expected. We had about a 10% increase, and it's been almost like clockwork every year, 10% increase. If we take this number and tack it on the wall and come back and look at it a year, you can take our 1,600 calls and add 10% to it, and that's where we'll be at next year. The benefit of being able to have a number that consistent is it makes our budgeting easier. There's certain things that do come at a fixed increase that we can calculate into our budgeting process off of that. The building construction in Granberry has been consistent throughout the year, and we've had our normal call volume with that, and as everyone always kind of squeaks about, it's the traffic accidents and traffic. That's the one thing that we have had a significant bump in, is our actual traffic accidents. And it's not just in the city proper, it is also up and down 377. There's been a pretty bad year on 377 from an accidents point of view. Quick review of just our budget from last year. We had no major surprises. We fully transitioned in using ESO Solutions. It's a program that we use for several different facets. It's maintenance, it's organization, it's just equipment tracking, and it's a fantastic resource. We also use it for writing down the narratives that are required for our calls, and it's took about three or four other scattered programs that we had across the department and combined it all into one front, provided through one company. And ESO's just been fantastic for us. Talking about our capital requests coming into this year from last year, our ISO consultant, Mike Peach, ISO consultant's gonna give us not only our five and our 10-year roadmap for the city and a fire department, but it really, it goes way beyond that. And I'm very excited for Mike to be coming in and helping with an evaluation and giving us the coaching and learning and evaluation for our organization to help us present for the city to plan for the future a lot easier. The ISO consultant should be in town, if I'm correct, March 13th. That's when he's coming in. The other major capital request that we've been working on, and it was talked about earlier, was the radio project, and we are chugging along right there on that front right now. We've got all of our ducks in a row for that project for when it does come in line. As per typical with the budget stuff, everyone got whacked over the head with the supply and demand issues. Supply and demand on the fire side was particularly bad. A very good example of this is if our new tower truck, the one that came in 2019, took 10 months from order to delivery. If you ordered that truck today, two years. And that's getting worse. It's something that I've been talking about with Mr. Ross a lot, and it's not just us. Everyone's getting just hammered on this, and I truly understand it. There's some good news on this front, some of the other obscure things that we would order that's not commonly ordered across the U.S. Fire hose used to be almost a year out from the time you ordered it. Now, it's only six months. So, they're finally starting to bring some of the supply and demand issues back into check. But that's not only a challenge for us, but that's a challenge for every department. Major projects for '22 and the growth into 2023. Membership growth is one of the single most important key factors to our organization. The easiest way to determine the health of our organization, or I would argue, any volunteer fire department is, do you have people? Because if you do, you've already done the hard part, because having people in your organization is difficult for any volunteer organization, and we've managed to grow. And when I first became chief, our active roster, total roster, was 39 people. We're at 60 now. Doesn't seem like much, but being able to grow 11 people across the organization, particularly with the economic fronts that we've had and the economic issues that we're facing now, and to still be able to grow, I'm really proud of what our organization's been able to accomplish on that front. Another major factor for '22 for our department was the creation of our Board of Directors and in the inclusion particularly of our three citizen board members. I have grand plans and high hopes with our citizen board members. They help provide oversight to the organization, and they also help just generally provide accountability from our organization to the community. And the full intent with our citizen board members is to use them and utilize them not only for their insight and their expertise, but also just as an ambassador for the organization to our community. Another thing that we've had created this year is our GVFD Support Brigade, and that is just a support division that helped literally support the organization. In historical past, it's always been associated with a women's brigade, women's support group, and we have a lot of people in Granberry that maybe don't want to necessarily participate in the firefighting side of the department, but they want to support the organization. And with the creation of this group, this gives other people that aren't interested in the emergency services side, but still be able to actually provide community service to their, their local community through our organization. And then ultimately, the creation of our GVFD.org website and the help of the city's communication team in helping us recruit. Those two things created have, is one of those factors that really helped us increase membership this year. The easiest way to describe it is we used to get, on average, one to two applications every quarter. Right now, we're getting two to five every month. Now, there's still a background check, and they ultimately still have to get through the process to get on the organization, but we've met our obligations and requirements to try and reach out into the community to let everyone know, hey, we exist, and we're here to help you, and you can help us. And the combination of the communications team and our websites actually been really instrumental in just the last about two and a half quarters for the growth of the organization. I want to thank our citizen board members from 2022, and that was Richard Hayes, Tony Mobley, and Tony Hedges. Again, it was, when we recruited them to our organization, it was the first time we'd done it, and it took a little bit to kind of get everyone figured out, like what exactly what was everyone's role with this was gonna be. And I appreciate their patience and their time and their help. They've been instrumental for the help of the organization. We just recently had our elections in January. Pleased to announce that Richard is back and Dr. Hedges is back, and we're hoping to introduce Mrs. Fay Landem to our group very soon, too. So, she'll be on our board hopefully in February. Looking forward to 2023. Through the help of our board and our membership's approval and the county subsidy, the department had purchased a new Kenworth tanker at the very end of December of '22. And this truck is going to significantly help supplement not only our city, not in a mainline function, no. The city's provided plenty of apparatus, tools, and equipment for our direct and immediate needs here in the city. This truck's gonna help us in the event that there's an emergency for a need of a tanker in the city, but primarily for our mutual aid agreements to the neighboring departments around us and into our ETJ, the direct belt directly around us. Want to just talk quickly about our Support Brigade. One of the bigger functions for our Support Brigade is when they came to me and wanted to create the brigade, the first thing they approached me about was fundraising. And fundraising is something, I don't want to say I've always found difficult, but it is a challenge, because if you had to tell me to pick, I need you to go to over 1,500 calls a year or raise money. Pick your time. Well, at the end of the day, we need the money, but you also need people to respond to the calls. And since we are volunteer, we have to pick somewhere. And the advantage of having the brigade and a group of individuals that's specifically interested in helping the organization raise money and also help take pressure off of the city is phenomenal, and that's amazing. And two of the projects that the brigade had been talking about was a dedicated, I'm gonna call it a Polaris or a side-by-side or Gator, and that piece of equipment is kind of niche, but it would very specifically fill a role for a need. And think of like the Granberry bike path. Fire trucks don't go down the bike path too well. They don't go down railroad tracks too well. You have some other tight areas. In the event that you're on the square, you can use the apparatus down there and not take up 14 parking places on the square. Mr. Mayor, do you have a question?
No.
Okay. And the other piece of equipment they were looking at was a dedicated fire boat on the lake. After some discussion and some preliminary thought process, it looks like, and it's pretty much a go, what the brigade's gonna go for is the smaller vehicle first. And one of the main reasons for that is with them being brand-new and coming out of the gate swinging, I would like them to find success as early, as fast as possible, and going with the smaller project, in my personal opinion, is the easier way to go. That said, I think it's critical that I don't mess up their idea. If they have a project, go tackle it, because the last thing they need is coming to our organization saying, we want to do this for you, and then be, no. But we do have to also consider on what can easily be achieved and what is gonna ultimately be the greatest use for our city and our area. And that's just a small part of the brigade. One of the things they're starting to do to start off their fundraiser is they have a, I'm gonna give a shameless plug real quick. February 18th, they are having their first fundraiser at Station 1, and it's a spaghetti dinner. And we'll be putting out an announcement on that further down the road also. And the spaghetti dinner will be from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. But again, that's at Station 1, February 18th. And the Support Brigade can also turn into something that can help us with community outreach and help us with Fire Prevention Month and really help us get our foot and name out there in a much broader capacity while still being able to easily consider covering the calls coming up that we know will be there in the future. And it's ultimately just to try and create a bigger awareness net throughout, not only our organization and our local community, but just throughout the entire business of Granberry and the governments of Granberry, and to get it to be known that we have multi-facets that we can be there to help with. One of the major things going forward for this coming year for us is gonna be building on our training. If our full intent is to have a heavy year on recruiting and bringing more people into the department, training's gonna be critical to that. And one of the couple of things that we've been looking at and working on is SFMA, which is, think of it as our, our school. That is the government entity that provides us That is the government entity that provides us the outline of what we need to be trained in and our path to certification. SFMA has been kind of a doormat for the last couple of years. The organization's really struggled, and they've had a hard time getting their portals and their programs updated. They finally got them up. And doing that, we'll be able to document everyone's training, and then, again, out the backside of that is certifications. So it's not just people training, saying they're doing a good thing. You're actually having state-certified training. That state-certified training is equivalent to what they would have at a TCFP academy. It's, it's exact same. Career firefighters and volunteers are trained the exact same way. It's the exact same stuff. One of the bigger things that we've been working on is reviving our District 16, and my training lieutenant and station lieutenant, Donnie Hurd, who's also a captain at Trophy Club and a lead instructor at TCC, has swallowed the sword on trying to take over and help our poor district. Our poor district, it needs a ton of help. It's a colossal project. The best thing about it is, is with us doing a quasi-hostile takeover of our district is, is that we can start actually bringing what we think needs to be brought to attention, not only for our, our city and our county, but our district, and bring it to Granbury and bring these classes and conventions and events into the city. And we can possibly, in a short amount of time, actually be, not a major, but a small revenue source for the city. Will it offset our budget? Unfortunately not. But it is something that we, we're acknowledging the commitment that the city has to us, and we're trying to figure out a way to help offset that and give a commitment back to the city. And again, it's not just the fire service side of it. It's how else are we committed to our community? And trying to build programs like that to help build the city's local businesses is one of those ways that we can do that. Another major project for us is getting our training field officially recognized by TEACs or the state. And it's, it's the attempt to try and get the state where, and we've already have the fee schedule set up, where other entities can come in and use our training field at a fee. Again, having the state golden seal of approval on it is just another factor of helping to generate that extra revenue. There's a couple of different challenges in with that. I'm not going to go into all of them right now, but it is, it's a long-term solution that the city's invested in the department through a training field, and that training field, though primarily used through our organization, it can be utilized in other facets. We've had Lockheed Martin in the past. We had a private company, I think it was Protecto Burn. They were up there for a little bit while they were building a, a local business project that they had had. So it's, it's not completely off the radar, but there is a potential to continue to more development into the future on the training field. One of the more incredible things that I've learned is trying to figure out our strategic tenure plan. And I'm getting very close to being able to present that to the city. It's taken me a long time to build it. And I need a few more weeks, maybe a little longer than that, but it's something that I would love to present to city management and let them definitely contribute to and truly see where we can take the department in the long run. I truly believe emphatically that there's no reason that Granbury can't be perpetual volunteer fire department. There's no reason, okay? There are very, very large volunteer fire departments, not only in Texas, but on the East Coast. But the trick to that is ultimately communication between the city and the organization and everyone having a true, emphatic, indefensible understanding of where we are going and how we are going to get there. And that's the plan with the tenure strategic plan. I truly believe that with the ISO consultant, Mike Peash, coming in, he's going to literally give us the roadmap for what the department will look like at year five or year 50. He'll give us that. And part of that's contributed to the fact that the city limits are officially, through state law, just locked. We know what the city's going to look like, and you know that eventually you're going to reach a certain cap as far as growth. Don't get me wrong, it will always be growing, but we won't be necessarily having double-digit growth every single year. And that's the, that's the physical asset part of the organization, but the mystery, and sometimes the questionable part, is the membership. And that's what this strategic plan builds on, is the membership, is the people. And it is a plan that is, and I've got it lightly highlighted there, membership engagement, community service, and involvement in health and safety. And there's a lot more to it than just those three lines and three sub, sub-bullets, but our ability to build the people within the organization and, and have the organization at a level of where it is self-sustaining through its own membership-building programs, officer development, community enhancement, community communication, public education, and to make that bedrock part of the organization, where it's a fundamental part of the organization, where a new member comes in at day one, they understand that this is how we will build, grow, and develop that individual, and they'll take it as far as they want. It's up to them to see how far do they want to go? Do they just want to remain a firefighter? Do they want to actually get into the public education side? Do they want to try and become an officer? Or if they're a lunatic and try and become chief eventually? But I'm getting very close to the tenure, getting the tenure plan complete, and I'm very excited to be presenting that. And very lastly, just a personal thanks for myself, not only to my membership. The biggest thing that I can ever tell anyone is there's not a single thing that I've done in Granbury that's worth mentioning without the membership. There's nothing I've done without them. And the, the support that I have from the membership is truly colossal, and they have embraced the idea of being a volunteer. And it is as much of them as they breathe air. And that's a rare commodity in people to have commitment to work as hard as they do and to still be able to do it day in, day out, and year after year. I also really particularly want to thank several city employees that have been a major help to me, and also apologize for the aggravation I've caused them throughout the year. Heather Walls, our office manager, has been just fantastic. She's done a lot for us. It's hard for her, because at the end of the day, you have 60 people. There's no specific schedule. We walk in, some of us want things, some of us forgot something, but we all ask her for help. And Heather has been a fantastic benefit for us. Mr. Ross, thank you. Mr. Crownover, and your help and my random questions that I send out to you. Ava Gregory, Pat Stewart, Roy Robertson, Christie Russell, Kevin Jones, and the communications team, Jeff and Chuck. I appreciate it. You guys have been a great help. I know that you guys sometimes get wondering, when I send an email to you and you're like, where did this come from? I assure you, it's not intentional when I do it to you. Thank you for everyone's time, and does anyone have any questions?
I did ask, or was wondering about, does the airport require any special equipment? And if so, do we have it?
The airport right now, when it'll require special equipment is when it becomes a Class D airport. Fancy term, it's when you have a control tower. The second you have a control tower is the second that the fire protection changes for the airport. As it sits right now, we, our equipment and the apparatus that we have can easily protect the airport. Now, that doesn't mean that you can't have a major disaster there and it still ultimately be bad, okay? But the equipment and tools and apparatus that we have are sufficient for, for the current state of the airport and the types of aircraft that are flying in and out of there. To even go one step further, there's a special type of firefighting foam that you have to have for specific events at, like that you'd have at the airport, and we do have that foam. We don't carry it on the truck, but it's literally right next to the truck. In the event that a call comes in at the airport, we can easily, literally grab the foam and take it with us. The combination of Rescue 1 and Rescue 2 and Engine 3, those would be the three main apparatus that'd be dealing with any accidents there, and they'd be supplemented by the tanker trucks. And with the new FBO coming in, and once you get your full infrastructure project built out there, you'll also have sewer and water lines run out to that, that part of the airport right now. But yes, the airport as it sits right now is covered adequately with the apparatus that we have.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other comments?
You said you've grown from 49 to 60. Is that an optimal amount? Is it enough? Do you, would, do you wish you had a lot more?
We were, we were joking about that number before, because I've always asked people, you ask our membership, we need to grow. We always need to grow. Okay, we've done that. What's the number? I have no clue. I think for us, a truly, truly healthy number for the city and for the organization is, and I should look this up, I need to find, there's a formula that specifically is out there to tell you, the, the size of your town for volunteer department, X amount of people. And I don't want to misquote the number, but I want to say that it is in the ballpark of, I think it's 500 to 1. Don't quote me on that number, though. I could be way off on that number. But for me, and looking forward to where we want to be at, at the end of this year from our membership perspective, I would like to be at about 85 members total. For us, one of the most incredible things, and we're working towards it, is ultimately, what is the pinnacle of achievement for a volunteer fire department? Is it the two minutes? Is it X amount of calls covered? Is it tools and equipment that you have? What is the, the pinnacle for volunteer success and achievement? And for me, I look at it in the perspective of, can the volunteer department provide staffing? Not paid, but be volunteer and provide staffing for the city? Because if we can achieve that and, and demonstrate that, that's an achievement. That's, that's not something to shake a stick at. What does that number look like? Lots of discussion goes into that number, because it comes down to how many people do you have on shift per day? And that, that becomes a very expensive question very quick, even if you are volunteer, because you'll just have such a colossal amount of people. You have just wear and tear, tools and equipment. The PPE is already a monster, and it's going to be just even bigger and scarier. And that's the, the true, true question is, what does that number look like? I have an idea, and I think it's something that we have truly need to hammer out in our strategic plan, because again, it makes it so much easier for our organization to plan, but also for the city to say, oh, okay, here's your goal. This is what the goal looks like. This is the intent of the goal. This is, you can build the whole program from there. You can go all the way from funding and, and all the way to just basic maintenance, wear and tear, and operations off of that, once you determine what that number is. And, and again, where, where do you want the organization?
Other questions? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
And I do want to say, too, that we, as a city, are certainly appreciative, because we too recognize that you are all volunteers, just like our commissions, our boards, volunteers. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
So we will now move to number five, public comments on agenda items for non-public hearing agenda items. We have no public hearings tonight. Speakers have a time limit of three minutes allotted at this time for comments regarding agenda items that are not listed as a public hearing. I have one from Mr. Danny Dwight. Would you like to come up? This is, you wanted to speak on the deliberation agenda, correct? On 7.2? Or do you want to speak now? Mr. Dwight, what's it?
Right now?
Yeah. Go ahead now.
Is this the right time to talk about this? I just wanted to make sure. Okay. My name is Danny Dwight, and I put in for a position on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and got a call from the mayor today saying, ought to come up here if I wanted to say something. So I walked in not having a clue what to say. You've got all my information there in front of you. I've worked for two different government law enforcement agencies for 33 years, and I have come to appreciate what governing agencies have to deal with, and they need all the help they can get usually. And I would appreciate the opportunity to serve on this committee, this commission. I have a vested interest, as I reside in the city of Granbury, and I try to keep track of what's going on here, especially in the downtown area, which is where I live, at 405 Counts Alley. And I have a vested interest in maintaining the integrity of this community and making sure that it appeals to the people who live here and the people who come to visit. It's a great place, and I would love the opportunity to serve. Basically, all I've got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Dwight, I appreciate that. And I called everyone that was non-incumbent today, just to make sure that everybody knew that this was, this was the night that we were making that. If you wanted to make that, that presentation, great, because we have some outstanding candidates looking at this. Okay. When I move to the consent agenda, all items on the consent agenda are routine. A previously discussed item will be approved with one motion, however, should a member of the city council wish to discuss any item, said item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered under the deliberation agenda. The item that we have is consider approving city council meetings, meeting minutes, January 3, regular meeting. Mr. Rodriguez? Yes?
Just wait for, make a motion.
No one wants to take it off? Go ahead, make the motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as stated.
Second.
Mr. Val, seconds. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays. It'd be 6-0. The minutes of deliberation, or consent agenda is approved. Deliberation agenda. Consider adopting ordinance number 23-10 incorporating the terms of resolution 0716, establishing a chapter 380 economic development program, and consider adopting ordinance number 23-11, amending Articles 1.5 of the City of Granbury Code of Ordinances, the master fee schedule. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. Turn it over to Lance Lacour, our Development Director for Economic Development. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Mayor, council members, city manager. In 2007, the city approved a resolution for a chapter 380 incentive program, which established an application for incentives with no application fee for economic development incentives and agreements. Currently, there is no ordinance that incorporates the resolution. The resolution was Resolution 07-16. Staff is suggesting approval of ordinance 23-10 incorporating the terms of resolution 07-16 and adopting ordinance 23-11, which amends Articles 1.50 of the Code of Ordinances' master fee schedule, creating an incentives application fee. That application fee proposed is $500. In terms of the agenda report, the financial impact is presented in Exhibit A. I just discussed the prior board or council action. The suggested action is to recommend approving, staff recommends approving ordinance number 23-10 incorporating the terms of resolution 07-16 and ordinance number 23-11.
Council questions? From Mr. Lacour? Mr. Rodriguez?
I guess, this is, from my understanding, never part of our master fee schedule. Is that correct, Chris?
That's correct. We've never charged a fee for an application.
Okay. So I had a hard time understanding. If we've never done it in the past, and we're doing it now, what's, what's the reason for doing it now?
Go ahead, Lance. Go ahead, Lance.
The reason for doing it now is, um, one of the things we wanted to do was have an ordinance for the incentives application. We do not currently have that. And we do have an application, but it's, it goes back to the resolution of two thousand and seven. And this is, uh, this is a, a typical practice among economic development organizations in cities and counties in the state.
So it helps cover the cost to process the application. And, uh, for instance, the city of Fort Worth charges five thousand dollars for an application. Other cities charge a thousand. We're, we're hitting it about half. So again, it's a new fee here, but we do spend a lot of money doing these projects. And, you know, another thing that we would be able to do is eliminate some of the all thunder and no rain in the process we go through to, uh, process requests and then they never come to fruition. So if you get a little skin in the game, I believe that's the intention of Lance, is to get them to participate.
More commitment.
Yeah, more commitment.
From the prospect.
So that's kind of what we're doing. We're proposing.
And where, where's this money? What line item is it going into?
It'll go into the general fund.
General fund?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Wadley.
How much time is typically involved in filling out an application like that? Or isn't, is there no typical?
There's, there's no typical time, but it is, it is pretty substantial in terms of a company. It depends on how much information on their project they have at hand. And, and in some, some cases, we mention to the prospect, we say, you know, fill out everything that you can. But it's, it's, it's a pretty extensive application.
Are there other questions?
Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Burwell.
Lance, you actually kind of answered one of my questions, um, on the flip side. One of it, one of my questions was, would this be a deterrent for developers to come in? But I think five hundred dollars is nominal, from what I understand from Chris. But we're also potentially deterring those that, as Chris said, also don't have skin in the game. I mean, I'm curious how we came up with the five hundred dollar mark. Are you basing that on population for the city or the size of the development? What, what is that? Where did that number come from?
We just looked at some different applications from some other organizations and we felt like it was less than what is being proposed in other places. But it, it still provides that skin in the game that, that we're talking about.
Lance, going back and looking at the earlier resolutions, one of the resolutions that, you know, it asks for the applicant's current operations, economic benefits that the city will derive, they should identify that, the proposed economic incentives requested from the city, the role of the city's economic incentives and the success of the applicant's enterprise, and however, the city council may waive any of these requirements at its discretion. Now, that was in the, uh, what do you call it? In the resolution. Is that in the ordinance here? Does the city council still have the, uh, the authority to waive these fees as we see fit? Or as presented?
I would defer to council on that. I would, if you don't mind.
The, the answer to that question is yes. We, what we did is we, we crafted this ordinance to take the resolution of seven sixteen, convert it into a resolution so we then could, or into an ordinance so that we could then add the fee to it. So it'll be the same terms.
Okay, great. Other questions? Do I hear a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-three ten incorporating the terms of resolution oh seven sixteen, establishing a chapter three eighty economic development program, and consider adopting ordinance number twenty-three dash eleven, amending articles one point five of the City of Granbury Code of Ordinances, the master fee schedule?
So moved.
Mr. Corrigan moves.
Second.
Ms. Burwell, seconds. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. It will pass six and oh. Now, we're going to move to seven point two. Yes, it might be time to take a break. We're going to consider appointments to the following city boards, commissions and committees, building standards, plumbing, adjustments and appeals board, capital improvements advisory committee, ethics commission, Granbury Cultural Arts Commission, Granbury Parks Board, Granbury Regional Airport Board, Historic Preservation Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission, and the zoning board of adjustment. Now, I'll ask that the audience work with us on this and that council work with me as we try and keep all of this street, uh, straight. We have some incumbents, we have, and we have a number of applicants. I want to say that all of the applicants have put their paperwork in and they have listed their attributes and their rationale for why they would like to be a part of our commissions or boards. And I will say this is as stellar a group of applicants, as I can imagine, that the city could have put forward. There are, if you're looking in the capital improvement area, we have former mayors that have asked to, uh, former mayors of different cities. We have personnel that have degrees in information science, volunteers, fraud investigation. We have people that know this side of the business. In the parks area, BS in landscape architecture, ten years experience, BS in recreation and park administration, has worked for the Garland Parks and Recreation Department, BS in forestry, has worked in commercial landscaping, construction, BS in marketing and communications. That's for the parks group. It's my, you know, I could read on through this. There's, this is, and you are, a stellar group of people. We have more applications than we have, uh, not that we have jobs, but, but we have more than we have of all the openings that are here. So anyone that does not get chosen tonight, please do not take your application away. These are needed to be filled sometimes throughout the year and sometimes other things come up and those applications are, are of high value to us at the, as we start looking for other opportunities. And one thing that I do want to go through, too, is to point out that the city and, you know, the state do not take these volunteer roles lightly. Each and every one of you will be signing a, uh, a statement that says that you do solemn, solemnly swear or affirm that you have not directly or indirectly paid, offered, promised to pay, contributed or promised to contribute any money or thing of value, or promised any public office or employment for the giving of withholding of a vote at the election at which I was elected or as reward to secure my appointment or confirmation, whichever the case may be. So help me God. The other thing is that there are some attendance requirements. And this is because the, these volunteers, I think Ms. Burwell mentioned it, you absolutely make decisions that help the city council move through the city business in an organized and reasonable fashion. You are absolutely an invaluable group of people. So our appreciation to you. And now we will get to naming the new members, discussing the new members and naming those new members. We will start with the building standards.
Mayor.
Yes. Yes, sir.
For the sake of time, there's three commissions, the Building Standards Plumbing Adjustments and Appeals Board, the Ethics Commission, and also the Zoning Board of Adjustments that, I'd like to make a suggestion that we just appoint the applicants because those applicants meet the requirements and the number of members for that and we don't have to decide on those applicants for those boards.
Let me talk to council for a minute, or let council talk to us.
So, so we need to keep the appointments separate, but I, I understand what you're saying. For example, the Building Standards Plumbing, the first board that we're at, uh, there are five vacancies and only three applicants. So to save time, you could just nominate Mr. Blevins, Mr. Gaffin, and Terry Taylor and get a second and we can move on.
Okay. Can we start with those boards? Mayor?
Yes.
Those three boards? And then we can move on to the rest of the boards.
We can take them in any order.
Okay.
Everybody good? Did you want to speak?
Sorry, Mayor. Yeah, I would, I mean, I understand that just for the sake of flipping back and forth, I think we'd just go right down the line, take them one at a time. It won't, it won't save us any time, but I think that would just keep everything in order. It's just my opinion.
And you're talking about talking building standards, Captain Brew?
Yeah.
Got, got it. Okay. Okay. Mr. Rodriguez, I think you're about to make a motion?
Yes, Mayor. I make a motion that we appoint the three members that submitted applications for the Building Standards Plumbing Adjustments and Appeals Board, Brian Blevins, Brian Gaffin, and Terry Taylor to the board as presented.
I'll second that.
Ms. Burwell, seconded. We have a motion. Ms. Burwell has seconded. Do I hear? Let me call for a vote on that. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Okay, that will pass six and oh. Thank you, Mr. Blevins, Mr. Gavin, and Mr. Taylor. Okay, for capital improvement, we have four needs and we have seven applicants. We have three incumbents on the capital improvement. And in conversations with Mr. Kaufman during the past weeks, this area right here, because of what we're about to be building, what's going to be happening in the community, this is a, this is going to be a big responsibility. So we have four additional applicants. Mr. Pat Abel, Mr. David Everett, Ms. Catherine McGill, and Ms. Carolyn Reeves. And this is, uh, just a brief on, uh, Mr. Abel, I, he was not going to be able to be here tonight. He has a personal need. Mr. Everett, are you in the audience? I think he too had a personal need. Ms. McGill? Ms. McGill is here? Good. She has a BS in landscape architecture and then Ms. Carolyn Reeves is, uh, not here tonight. She's a visit, uh, she's a volunteer. She's a sheriff's posse and is a owner of a building downtown. So we have four additional applicants here. Do I hear? I motion to elect one of these, or two. Nominate.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
I'd like to nominate Brian Blevins, Jerry Colberg, Eddie Funderberg, and David Everett. David was the wholesome city, uh, city manager appraisal district and so forth. And given what just Chris said, I thought he'd be a good candidate.
I second that.
Second. Are there other individuals to?
Mayor, I make the same nominations.
You'd like to make the same nomination?
Same, yes.
Okay. Is there any other, is there a different nomination to be made? No? No? Okay. Okay. I'm gonna, we have a nomination to nominate for the cap, we have a motion to nominate for capital improvement committee, Mr. Brian Blevins, Mr. Jerry Colberg, Mr. Eddie Funderburk, Funder Burke, and Mr. David Everett. Do I hear? We have a second. We have a motion and a second. Okay? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. Passes six and oh. Thank you, guys, for working with me on this. Mr. Wadley, seconded. Okay. On the ethics committee, we have one, we have a need for three and one incumbent. Since we have only one nominee, we're going to choose two people from the audience randomly.
Mayor? I, I make a motion that we appoint Rod Reyes to the ethics commission.
I'll second that.
Seconded. We have a nomination to appoint Rod Reyes to the ethics commitment. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. That passes six and oh. Congratulations, Mr. Reyes. Okay. Granbury Cultural Arts Center. We have a need for four and we have three incumbents, Ms. Barbara Lloyd, Ms. Stacy Martin, Ms. Coral Worley. And we have three additional applicants, Mr. Pat Abel, Ms. Bridget Sorrellis, and Chesee, Ms. Chesee Langford. And their qualifications, Mr. Abbott, uh, Mr. Abel, BS in information systems, got HOA board experience, finance review, uh, an individual that's, that's known here. Ms. Sorrells, BA, and, and I just know that she has a bachelor of arts, but she's also a professional photographer, experienced with nonprofits. And Ms. Chesee Langford has a BS in marketing communications, a master's in communication, and a certificate in grant writing. Now, I know that a couple of you, in addition to me, attend the Granbury Cultural Arts sessions because, or the meetings because we are working very hard to have the state designate Granbury as a cultural arts district. And I know that there's a tremendous amount of work that's been going on there. So there, is there other discussion?
Mayor.
Mr. Rodriguez.
I make a nomination for Shishi Langford, Barbara Lloyd, Stacy Martin, and Cory Worley. I second that.
That's seconded. So if anybody else, that's a nomination.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr.?
I'd like to nominate Barbara Lloyd, Stacy Martin, Coral Worley, and also Bridget Sorrell.
Okay? Okay, we have two nominations, or two slates nominated? Are there others? Okay. All right. Do I hear? All right, we have the nomination. I'm going to call for a vote on Ms. Barbara Lloyd, slate of Ms. Barbara Lloyd, Ms. Stacy Martin, Ms. Coral Worley. You have to go individually with each one, okay? Okay. Everyone on the council is able, is, can vote four times, right? Okay, and we have five names to call. Okay. So it's why they, I asked for a little patience and a lot of help today. Okay. Last year, I was, uh, I had the flu and I was gone and Pro Tim did an excellent job. I, I was feeling peaked this afternoon. Shit, yeah. Okay. So we have a nomination, so I'm going to call for a vote on Ms. Barbara Lloyd. Who votes for Ms. Barbara Lloyd? I have all six. Okay, you're keeping score here. I'm going to call for a vote on Ms. Stacy Martin. Oh. I'll call for a vote on Ms. Coral Worley. So, good. I'll call for a vote on Ms. Bridget Sorrellis. And I'll call for a vote on Ms. Chesee Langford. Fine. Okay. So welcome back to the board, Ms. Barbara Lloyd, Ms. Stacy Martin, Ms. Coral Worley. And we welcome to the board Chesee Langford. And we encourage Pat and Bridget to stay close because there's always work to do on this, call it, on the Granbury Arts Commission Cultural Arts Center. Okay. And we'll go to the Parks Board. We need six. We have five incumbents. Oh, we need a motion? Okay. Do I appoint them, uh, do I appoint them second, uh, individually or as, as a slate?
As a slate.
Okay. I hear a motion to appoint Barbara Lloyd, Stacy Martin, Coral Worley, and Chesee Langford to the Granbury Cultural Arts Center.
So moved.
It is moved by Mr. Wadley, seconded by Mr. Ms. Burwell. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Passes six and oh. Takes a village, thank you. Okay, the Parks Board. We have a need for six. We have five incumbents and five additional applicants. We have Ms. Barbara Boozer, Ms. John, Mr. John Curtner, Mr. James Dickens, Josh, Josh McGuinness, Mr. Ms. Joni Snyder as the incumbents. And we have five additional applicants, Mr. Pat Abel, Ms. Catherine McGill, Mr. Mark McHugh, Mr. Dawson Pulliam, and Ms. Chesee Langford. And these- And these are the qualifications. We've talked about Mr. Abel with his information sciences, his board experience, et cetera, Ms. McGill, landscape architecture, Mr. McHugh, a BS in recreation and park administration, working for the city of Garland at one time, Mr. Pulliam, BS in forestry, has worked in commercial landscaping, construction, and software sales. And Ms. Langford, we just talked about, the marketing communications and certification and grant writing. She just got assigned to the other board.
Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Rodriguez.
I just want to make a comment real quick before we get started on this, and I just want to say that these applicants were awesome. It makes our job a little bit harder when you have people that bring the type of experience that we're looking for, and then you look at the experience and you have to pick from that experience. It is just, it is very difficult for us, at least for me, I'll speak for myself, that it was very difficult to pick from the applicants that were provided for us for the Granberry Parks Board. With that said, Mayor, I make a nomination that we keep the incumbents and add Catherine McGill.
So, you're?
And I second that one.
So, you're going to nominate the five incumbents and Ms. Catherine McGill, okay,
as one slate? Is there another slate that anyone would like to offer? This is tough. There's no other slate?
No nominations.
No other nominations?
Motion to appoint.
So, I make a motion that we nominate Ms. Barbara Boozer, Mr. John Curtner, Mr. James Dickens, Josh McGuinness, Ms. Joni Snyder, and Ms. Catherine McGill to the Park Board. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion as stated.
Second. Second.
Seconded by Ms. Burwell. Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I believe that passes six and oh. Thank you, Ms. Boozer, Curtner, Mr. Dickens, McGuinness, Snyder, and welcome, Ms. McGill. Okay. For the Granberry Regional Airport, we need six. We have four incumbents and four additional applicants. Pat, you've just created a place everybody wants to be out there. Thank you. The four incumbents are Mr. French, Larry French, Mr. Rick Huber, Mr. Ronnie Stowell, and Mr. Jackie Vaughn. Thank them too. Four additional applicants, Mr. Pat Abel, Mr. Ralph Newton, Ms. Shishi Langford, and Ms. Carolyn Reeves. Mr. Abel, we've talked about, Mr. Newton, 15 years resident, served on our Hood County Historical Board, Sherry Shishi, we've talked about, our communications and grant writing, and Carolyn Reeves is, owns a building downtown and is on the, the Hood County Sheriff's Posse, is fraud investigator and volunteers at, all of these people are extremely active in our, in our community. Do I hear a nomination for a particular slate?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bell.
I have a question. So, the six members, is that a five regular member and one alternate? Does that comprise the six?
That, that's correct. It needs to be specific, the five, five nominations, and then specifically who you're nominating as the alternate.
So, that being, that being clarified, I'd like to make a nomination then that Larry French, Rick Huber, Ronnie Stowell, Jackie Vaughn, and Pat Abel as the five board members with Ralph Newton as our alternate.
I'll second that.
I have a nomination for the slate of Mr. French, Huber, Stowell, Vaughn, and Abel as members, and Mr. Ralph Newton as the alternate, and it's been seconded. Do I hear a second slate?
Is there any other nominations?
There's no slate, another nomination. Is there another nomination? No? Okay. Now, I hear a motion to appoint Mr. Larry French, Mr. Rick Huber, Mr. Ronnie Stowell, Mr. Jackie Vaughn, and Mr. Pat Abel as members of the Granberry Regional Airport Board, and Mr. Ralph Newton as an alter, as an alternate to that board.
So moved as stated.
And seconded.
Mr. Wadley. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Passes six and oh. For historic preservation, we need three. We have three incumbents, and we have four additional applicants. We have as incumbents, Mr. Garland, Ms. Peters, and Ms. Kay Colrain Schwartz. The additional applicants, we've talked about, Mr. Pulliman, BS in forestry, Mr. David Everett, former mayor of Halton City Appraisal Board and Economics, we put him on some other opportunities tonight, Ms. Shishi Langford, we've also put on another opportunity tonight, and then Ms. Carolyn Reeves who works, who owns the building downtown. They all meet our requirements. So, we have three. Do I hear a nomination?
Mayor.
Ms. Burwell.
I'd like to nominate Cindy Peters, Peter Garland, and Kay Colrain. I always do that.
Okay. Say it again.
Cindy Peters, Peter Garland, and Kay Colrain.
She's nominated the three incumbents as a slate. Do I hear other nominations? I hear no other nominations. I'm going to ask for a motion to appoint Mr. Peter Garland, Ms. Cindy Peters, and Ms. Kay Colrain Schwartz to the Historic Preservation Board.
So moved as stated.
Second.
It's made by Ms. Burwell, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no opposed, it's passed six and oh. We're just about to get this right. Planning and zoning, we need four, and we have four incumbents and three additional applicants. The incumbents being Mr. John Grace, Mr. Tim Hallman, Ms. Rita Kay, and Mr. Kevin Watson. And the additional ones are Mr. Abel, Mr. William Dwight, and Mr. Skip Overdyre. I don't think we've talked about Mr. Overdyre yet. He has a master's in public administration, was a city council member of Destin, Florida, and a P&amp;Z member in Clovis, New Mexico. That would be a broad area of experience. Okay, we need four.
Mayor.
Mr. Rodriguez.
I make a nomination that we keep the four incumbents.
Who are Mr. Grace, Mr. Hallman, Ms. Rita Kay, and Mr. Watson.
Mayor.
Yes, Mayor.
I'd like to add Skip Overdyre to that, please.
I can only have four.
Well, I, they're already nominated, so I'm adding.
Oh, another nomination, so we'll have to go through each one of these. Okay. Okay. Is there other? So, as a nominee for our planning and zoning, we have Mr. John Grace. All in favor of Mr. Grace say aye. Raise your hand. Raise your hand. We have another nomination for Mr. Tim Hallman. We have one, two, three, five. Was that five or six? Mr. Corrigan, did you vote? Yes, okay. Six. All right. Four, Ms. Rita Kay. Which hand are you using, Mr. Corrigan? I'm having, okay. Did you get the count?
Got it. Either one works.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Mr. Kevin Watson. And Mr. Skip Overdyre. Have we used?
Four or one?
You have a tie?
We do. John Grace, Skip Overdyre, and Kevin Watson are the four, please.
Man, I want all of them.
So, what you can do is take a motion to appoint Hallman and Rita Kay, they both received six, get a second on that, and appoint those two, and then take new nominations for the remaining two seats.
So, read that, read that out again, please.
Yeah. So, Tim Hallman and Rita Kay had six votes, that was unanimous, you can take a motion to appoint those two, get a second, vote on that, and then we'll go back through nominations again for the remaining two seats, and you'll only be given two votes each.
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Wadley.
I make a motion that we nominate, that we appoint Tim Hallman and Rita Kay to the P&amp;Z.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That passes six and oh with Mr. Tim Hallman and Ms. Rita Kay being appointed to the planning and zoning. Now, we will take nominations with Mr. John Grace, Mr. Kevin Watson, Mr. Pat Abel, Mr. William Dwight, Mr. Skip Overdyre.
Mayor, I make a nomination that we appoint Kevin Watson and John Grace.
I have a nomination to appoint Mr. Grace, Mr. Kevin Watson.
Mayor, I'd like to add Skip Overdyre to that.
And Mr. Skip Overdyre.
Two votes.
Two votes.
You're filling two seats, so you get two votes.
Well, I hear you. I'm looking these over. Okay.
You're going to have the same vote.
I want, I already said, I want everybody. I want everybody.
It's going to be seven twenty.
Okay.
You have to vote fifteen times like this.
All, yeah. All in favor of Mr. John Grace. All in favor of Mr. Kevin Watson. And all in favor of Mr. Skip Overdyre.
How you vote, Mayor?
I'd already voted twice.
He used his two votes.
I used mine already. So, Mr. Overdyre and Mr. Watson, is that it? Or is that?
That's correct.
That's how you read that? Okay. So, I have a motion to appoint Mr. Kevin Watson and Mr. Skip Overdyre to the Planning and Zoning Board.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Wadley, seconded by Mr. Bell.
That was Ms. Burwell.
Ms. Burwell. Seconded by Ms. Burwell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. So, welcome Mr. Watson and Mr. Skip Overdyre to the Planning and Zoning Board. I can handle this next one. We need three. We have two incumbents, Ms. Eileen Kate, Ms. Mary L. Riley, and we have one additional applicant, Mr. David Everett.
Mayor.
Mr. Rodriguez.
I make a motion that we appoint the two incumbents and David Everett to the zoning board of adjustments as the three appointed members.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of nominating Ms. Ellen Kate, Eileen Kate, Ms. Mary L. Riley, and Mr. David Everett to our zoning board of adjustment, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Passes six and oh. Welcome Ms. Kate, Ms. Riley, and Mr. Everett to our ZBA. Thank you. I appreciate each and every one of you. There are some out there that are not tonight appointed to a board. Like I said, don't go far because we will be having future needs, and we will keep these resumes on tap, these outstanding resumes, I'll say that again, on tap, and we'll be in touch. Thank you so much. Mr. Kaufman.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a need for executive session from staff?
Yes, we do.
Briefing?
Yes.
Very good. I now declare that the Granberry City Council is convened into open session, that all members are present. The city council will go into closed session pursuant to provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections. Section 551.071, consultation with attorney pending or contemplated litigation. Section 551.072, deliberation regarding real property. And section 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. We are now in closed session. And to now reconvene and now declare that Granberry City Council reconvenes into open session, there was no action taken in closed session, and all council members are present. There being no further business, we are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.